First item on the agenda this evening is a report from our city planner and director of redevelopment on Samin, about the Main Street Road Diet. Thank you, Samin. Well, we spoke to the Department of Transportation about a special meeting on September 25th, get them to talk about the road diet concepts from Main Street. Well, they informed us that they would like to be further along in their design before coming into us and making a public presentation. What they are asking from us today is city authorization to continue study of the concept. We told them that we weren't in a position now to authorize installation or construction of this concept, this road diet concept. They said, "That's fine." They'd like to do their additional study. They would come back to us with their findings. They would hold public meetings. They would answer all of our questions and quite frankly determine if it will even work on Route 71 on Main. So, at this point again, we're not saying, "Yes, install it." We don't install it, but they are looking for us to endorse them looking at it further. So, I have prepared a resolution for your consideration, which would endorse then further defining this concept, doing further study of it. Making it clear in this resolution, we're not approving it, also not saying no to it, but yes, continue further study. And also, I put in some language there about the DOT coordinating with the Orange New York Department, in case of any utility lines that need to be replaced under Main Street. I do recommend that you pass this resolution. I certainly think it's worth taking a look at. Doesn't cost us, the city, anything.
No, I didn't expect you to know.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything. And they would even install it, and Main Street's a state road light. Their project is only curb-to-curb. It's not, doesn't include sidewalks. I want to...
Very good question.
I think that sometimes the main issue is, I suppose, the issue people, or do further study, see if there's anything that we're moving something else.
The key is that the city is the one, you will make the final decision as to whether anything goes forward, and that we got that committee. We need that consideration. Okay, Don, thank you. Our next item, paddleboard concession request. Brett, I'm going to let him take that one.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you may have received a copy of an email from Michael Breyote, the gentleman who was awarded the concession several weeks ago to undertake a paddleboard service on the Dino Lake. Mr. Breyote sent an email, which made part of the packages to receive in, in which he is requesting an extension of the end date of that concession for this evening from September 15th, which was the original date that was envisioned through November 1st. The rationale for Mr. Brody's request, and I did speak to Mr. Brody before tonight, he's not able to be here unfortunately because he had a very important personal matter that he could not reschedule, and I told him that I would move his request forward to the mayor and council. But, as you recall, when we went out and put this, as well as the surf concession out to advertise in the newspaper for potential vendors, it was very late in the season of 2013, and our hope was that the vendors were going to be able to get up and running on or about July 26th. In actuality, once the award was made, the contracts were executed, the insurance posted, it wasn't until at least mid-August that they were able to get up and running. So, they lost about three weeks in a season that was shortened considerably anyway. So, he's requested your consideration to extend this through November 1st under all the same terms and conditions of the original award. I will indicate that the concessions were done through what's known as the competitive contracting process of the local public contracts law, which means that you were allowed to grade the responses that were received under certain categories and assign a certain number of points in accordance with the criteria that was set forth in the RFP, and your award was allowed to be made based on price and other factors considered. It wasn't just solely the price that was offered. Had this been strictly based on economics and who submitted the highest bid, I would have had an issue with the fact that you were potentially extending the time period. But in this case, you had the discretion, with all things considered, to award this to the vendor who submitted the best proposal, price and other factors considered. As you will recall, the vendor offered the city $5,000 for the right to undertake this concession for the remainder of the 2013 summer season. And again, it didn't get up and running until at least mid-August, and the cutoff date being September 15th, basically only got four weeks. So, he's requesting your consideration to extend that through November 1st, and that's within your discretion, whatever you would prefer to do with that.
I've got a problem. Number one, the insurance for me is extended?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, any costs associated with this, where you have to throw off anything or anything? He should pay us as well.
Understood.
And I see a problem, however. Is a mistake. And then the third question, and it has nothing to do with that, but what is his payment schedule next year? Because I looked it up and I couldn't find it. But I mean, years ago, with the beach rent, it used to be like, say, 20% eastern, then 40% July 4th, blah, blah, blah. But when does he pay the 10 grand next year?
I believe that there is a specific provision in the contract. It's about a fair amount, certainly, that there's a specific provision in the contract. My recollection is that it's on or before May 1st, because it's supposed to be for the season starting with Memorial Day weekend through the second weekend in September. So, I'll go back and I'll double check what's in the contract. I do recall there's a specific date listed.
Okay. That's my fault. It's my fault. That's my complaint. But again, if he picks up all the legal clauses to exempt list, if there are any, I have no problem.
Okay. With those stipulations, and your approval, we'll move that forward for authorization during the regular portion of the meeting.
Please do.
Excellent. All right. Next item on the agenda, sewer rate presentation. Our order to Dan Kaplan is here tonight to present that to the governing body and the public.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. So, pursuant to the statute, user penalties are required to recompute their sewer connection fees annually. This sewer connection fee is a fee payable only by new connectors to the system. It doesn't impact any resident or business that presently connected and paying a sewer user charge. This is only for the right to connect to the sewer system. The concept behind the sewer connection fee is to bring everybody on a level playing field, so that if someone has been in a store and paying their annual user charge for years and years and years, and a neighbor moves in, new on the block, he shouldn't get the benefit of a system that's already been paid for, so he has to come in and pay his fair share to catch up for all the capital expenditures that have been captured from the users that have paid for years and years and years. The sewer connection fee calculation is straightforward. It's pursuant to statute. The study focused only on the sewer connection fees, and the objective was to recompute the fee in accordance with the law. The computation has two parts. First, the capital base, which is the sum of all the debt service that the city has paid for sewer improvements since its inception, and also added to that are any capital costs that the city paid for that weren't bonded. Subtract from that any grants or subsidies that the city received. A good example of that would be the 2007 NJ EIT debt service. You pay the principal and interest semi-annually on the N07 EIT, but it's reimbursed to the city by a developer. So, the 07 debt service is a good example of something that you pay, but doesn't hit the capital fees. Second part of the equation is the determination service units. The number of service units is determined by a flow-based calculation. We receive flow data from New Jersey American Motor Company annually, and we compute the average daily consumption. And then it's a matter of dividing the capital base by the number of service units. Capital base was 28.7 million, number of service units was 69.38. That yields a residential connection fee of $4,043. For non-residential connectors, it's a little different. They're charged a connection fee based on their projection, projected consumption, which in large part is determined by NJDP flow criteria. And then you compute a per gallon, per day charge for them. That calculation yielded $21.88. So, the study yielded that the residential connection fee should be 41.43. It was 39.55, it's an increase of $188, or 4.75%. And for non-residentials, was $20.32, recommended go into $21.88 per gallon per day, it's a $1.56 increase, or a 7.7% increase. That's it.
And this is a statutory requirement, so you look at this every year and make these adjustments?
Yeah. It's a statutory requirement. It's also part of the best practices that the state makes you do annually. One of the best practices is that you annually look at your fees, all fees, and determine whether you can increase them, and clearly, this is one that needs to be increased pursuant to statute.
And Mayor and council, as I indicated in my memo that was part of your package, any revisions to the fee schedule must be subject to a public hearing pursuant to the state statute that Mr. Kaplan referenced. So, we have advertised for that public hearing to be held during the regular portion of the next council meeting, because I thought this would be new to some of you. We listed it on the agenda as maybe table, and I decided to leave it to your discretion as to whether you wanted to proceed with the public hearing this evening. We are ready to do so during tonight's regular session, so with your permission, we'd like to move forward with it. At the end of the business portion of the regular session, we'll go through the motions of having Mr. Kaplan put testimony on the record, and then we'll open it up for public comment and a public hearing. And at the end of that, you will, at your discretion, you may approve and adopt a resolution which sets the piece. I left a copy of a proposed resolution on the days for you this evening. I know you don't like to get things the night of the meeting. All it is, is just putting it into resolution form, the document that was in your packages, which is the proposed fees, and everything that was in there has been put into resolution form, which is what I passed out to you tonight. And if you would like to move forward with that public hearing tonight during the regular session, we can certainly do so, and at the conclusion of that, you can consider the resolution that I've prepared.
Yeah, I agree.
So, we'll move forward then, tonight? Good. Thank you.
Dave?
Yep.
See you later.
Yes.
Thank you. Tom Gilmore.
And if I could also indicate that the documents that Mr. Kaplan referenced and which were provided to the council, there is a copy of it over on the table in the agendas if anyone from the public would like to obtain a copy.
Steve?
Good evening.
I ask that the urban enterprise won't be placed on the agenda tonight. There's been a lot of questions about the UEZ, the funds that are left, what's going on with the UEZ. I gave you a short report of what's happened with the UEZ, how it's set up, how it works. And basically, I'm just going to go over a couple of points here. The UEZ was run by a corporation, the Asbury Underground Development Corporation, which was set up in 1994, when the UEZ was originally established for the city. And that corporation was actually the board that ran the program for the last, how many ever years we're in right now? The program became inactive in 2011, when the governor finally pulled the funds, came back to the city. We used to run a lot of programs, which hopefully you remember, the Micro-Lum program, improvement program, and a number of a bunch of other programs. We financed the fire trucks. We did a number of different things. And during that period of time, there was, we worked on 56 programs that actually invested $5,393,169 back into the city. So, the program's not funded anymore. The incentive part of it is still in existence. So, if you are a business and as a part, you can still become urban enterprise zone program and take advantage of the reduced sales tax and the sales tax exemption. But the city is not getting any more money back. So, I think we're at a point right now where we have to decide, you know, whether it makes sense to actually keep this program together or not. We're probably going to go ahead with a full accounting of all the money, so everybody knows exactly where the money is and where it went during that period of time. But, as I mentioned in the memo, the amount that is available right now is that there's $119,472.07, and it's the remaining balance of the money that was used for the Springwood lighting program. And there is $32,668.
Eighty-six.
Sixty-six.
Eighty-six?
Let me start.
Six hundred eighty-six?
Let me start again there. $32,686.11 left over, which is in deposit right now in the Urban Enterprise Zone Second Generation Fund. So, we have a total of $152,158.18. In addition to that, we have two outstanding loans that will generate $16,276.59 back to the city within the next two years, both scheduled to come due in the next two years. So, that's my report. I'd like permission to actually take the Second Generation Fund and close it out and give it back to the city right now. It's in a bank account right now, Bank of America, earning interest. But I think since there is some desire that some of those funds might get used, I think it's a good idea to just close that account out and move it over to the city.
And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the funding we were using as the main source for the rebuilding of the website? Maybe not all of it, but that's where we're going with it.
If that's your desire. But I think the best way to do this is to actually give it back to the city, so the city has it, so whatever the council wants to do.
But can we earmark it for something, Fred? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The way to do that is if you want to use any of these funds, you have to create a resolution indicating, you know, how much you want to use and how you're going, what is going to be used for. And it has to be an urban enterprise zone approved use for that money.
And the website would be?
Yes. The marketing is an approved use. So, that's the desire, that's the way the process will work.
There's actually UEZ funds that were used to establish the website in the first place.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, would you like that resolution prepared for the next council meeting?
Well, I think Sue and I are on the committee. I think we agree that that would be best.
You know what? The thing I'm uncertain about is, before you begin to earmark money, you have to find out what money is needed to be earmarked. But I have a question also.
Yes.
With these UEZ funds, can any member of council, as long as we have two other votes, earmark any of this money for UEZ project?
Yes. We're just, we're just like a regular resolution, if the resolution's approved, then the money would be used.
I am hoping that we don't earmark any money until we find out what monies we want to earmark.
Well, my only, my only question tonight is, I want to move on, or close out the account, which I would do at the end of the month. It's an interest-bearing account, so I'd wait till the end of the month and then transfer the money back to the city.
I think Sue and I have an interest in earmarking this money specifically for the website, the Second Generation UEZ.
And what amount?
Well, we would earmark the 32, but that doesn't mean we would use the entire 32. I mean, there's 119 left from Springwood out. Nobody's saying we'd use all of it, but we're earmarking it to ensure that when we go out to bid, we can, we have money to pay for people to rebuild the website.
Yeah, I think, I think our concern was, we met with Fred, I think we met with Fred and we also met with Tom, and we met with the corporation against an estimate on what rebuilding a website would cost, a ballpark figure of what it would cost, in addition to not only rebuilding it, but maintaining it. And this time, we want to get some kind of contract from a company where they're going to maintain it for one, three years, or some assurance that they're not going to build it and then leave, and the same thing happen. And that's why, you know, and we discussed using the UEZ money and how that funding could be used for that, without taking anything away from, especially the money that's coming back to the Springwood Light Project, because I feel that we may want to use that money again to do some different things, which is bringing that up in that area. So, we are talking about the 32,000.
Just the procedure for using that money, is it the resolution for it's confirmed to as a dedication by rider, or is it actually now the budget's adopted, supplement to the budget, so you don't anticipate the revenue from Tom UEZ, and then you'll anticipate, appropriate it for whatever use you deem fit for the website, or whatever, but it actually comes a supplement.
So, question. Do we have, do we have to go out on bid if, if, if the amount of this project is over $17,500?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And so, if that be the case, then we're suggesting that we set aside $32,686 specifically for this project. Should both the, the design, development, and the maintenance not be, not reach that amount, then whatever's left over goes back into this fund?
Would be eligible to be put toward other uses.
Okay. And just one last question. Because the website is going to have to be maintained yearly, for as long as we have the website, then would money come out of here for the operational budget? I mean, four, five, six years from now?
It could come out of the dedication by rider that you established. It could come out of here, year after year, after year. Yes.
It would be a dedicated fund.
Or it could come out of the general budget.
Sure.
Okay.
So, choose a role.
Or grants that are written, or?
Go ahead.
And on there, authorized?
There's a form for a dedication by rider resolution, so I'd prefer to have that form, resolution prepared in writing for you to consider at a future council. So, we can prepare that for your consideration, perhaps in the next.
We need to come in, we need to...
And if I can just clarify, although the bid threshold for the city is $17,500, that's for purchase of goods generally. What we're talking about here, a website service being original and artistic in nature, would be such that you would, like with the concession, be able to go out to RFP and award to the contractor who's offering you what you deem to be best, price and other factors considered. So, and it's just a slightly different process that's allowed under the local public contracts law, because you wouldn't want to be limited to awarding a contract to the low bidder, because they might not be offering you the best product. Just keep that in mind.
So, Tom, what you're asking tonight is that we simply close out, or transfer this money and close out this account?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I heard you, we're going to go through with the order.
Going to do the count.
And you're going to do the dedication?
Dedication by rider resolution. So, do we need to take formal public action tonight on what you're suggesting with regard to the transfer of funds?
I'm not sure. Do we need?
No. But as far as awarding the order, is that something that?
Well, we're not quite ready to talk about that yet.
I'm bored just to talk about that.
So, our intention is to provide a full accounting of the UEZ program to the council.
Can I, once it gets moved over into, once it's moved, the monies, do you do the accounting before, you do the accounting before and then you move the money?
No, no.
How does that work?
The money's just going to be moved to one account.
Okay.
The order is your question.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Where are we with the RFP? Because I'm getting lots of calls and things like that. So, I'm just, I guess my question is, when do we think we're actually going to put the RFP out?
I would say we should be able to have it ready by the next council meeting. We had a meeting on Friday with the members of the subcommittee, council members, and the mayors, and the councilman, Quinn, on Friday. And, yes, we had discussed the results of that recent forum that was held, and we're getting the RFP together, so that we should be in a position relatively soon to be able to advertise that. It would have to be formally authorized, so hopefully we can turn on the next council meeting agenda to have the council approve formally going out to RFP.
I think we, one of the main things that came from that meeting is designated funding for, to make sure that we're really designing.
It's just that, you know, we're getting lots of inquiries, you know, just trying to get, just trying to get people to sort of the guidelines of when that's going to come out.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next item, any special benefications?
Right. We have four special events applications. However, the surf contest one has been pulled. They have decided not to do that. They'll probably come back, but not going to do it this year. The first one is the old event, the Thomas Day Reenactment. We're all okay with that.
Tom, ask a question? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yes?
Okay. Thank you. The next one is Asbury Underground. This is a new event. Almost all the galleries in downtown are participating in this event. It's a day of art that'll take place September 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The only real portion that they need approval for is they're asking to take three parking places in front of gallery 629 and erect a tent there. They will not impede the sidewalk, because the tent will actually be the parking place. The only thing that we do is actually put barriers up on the outside of the parking space, so that people can't get out of the space into the street. We've done this once before, and we didn't have those barricades, and it was a little problematic.
And they pay for the parking spaces?
They pay for the parking spaces, yes.
Any questions?
Next one is, was, the surf contest. The next one is Stop the Violence Rally. It's a block party. It has to take place September 21st, this weekend, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Union Avenue, between Atlantic Avenue and Springwood Avenue. The app, and it's the Charity Kings. They're a nonprofit. And they have done, and the signatures on the back of this are the property owners on that block, so they did go out and talk to all the property owners in that area. They expect 50 to 75 people attending, and they're going to do their own cleanup. The only thing that they will need from us are barricades to close the street, and I believe we designate one police officer for track. They have asked that we waive the street closing fee on this application.
What is the street closing?
In this case, will be $250.
Came before the special events committee, Councilman Frim, and I were there, and we had just talked with Tom, Leisha, Councilman Frim, and myself, and the police, and everybody felt we have to be consistent.
Sure.
If you charge one person, you have to charge everybody for a street closing. We charge churches, we charge everybody else. So, they have to be charged. And so, especially the requesting, it turned down.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question before you go on with that dispray here.
Okay.
Would it, and I'm trying to clearly understand, I know they want to have it in the street, to close the street down. Is it at all possible to have it, and I'm familiar with the location, either on Atkins Avenue in Springwood, where the park is going to be, or between the Obama Building and the Middle School?
Well, the Obama Building and the Middle School is actually rented property, so they don't have to get permission from that occupancy to operate there. As far as the park is concerned, we have a park use fee that is part of the special events application, so...
Is that the same amount of money?
No, it's actually one. It's $400.
Thank you.
And to save them money and other events, I believe Alex wants Springwood out, he asked, and what we suggested, like, the puppy maintenance drops off barricades, it was a pity, the puppy maintenance drops off trash cans, it was a pity. At the community event, we said, "Hey, do you have a pickup truck? Yes, come pick them up," and there's no charge. So, we're trying to work with everybody, but just to waive the street closing, but any other fees we can waive, waive it, so it does not be in charge. We drop off barricades, we drop off trash cans, we're picking them up, because they're going to pick them up themselves.
The difficulty that we've had in the past with street closing is it usually generates a police officer, their traffic control. So, that's how the fee originally came about.
Thank you.
So, just to clear this up, so we are not waiving the fee? Is that correct?
That's what I am saying.
Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Next, I know it is the preference of the city council not to have any add-ons to the agenda. I understand that perfectly clear. However, I'd like to ask you if you consider another application from the Asbury Chamber of Commerce that was not received in time to get on the agenda, to have a classic car show planned for this weekend, and with your permission, I'd like to have the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce come up and present the application.
Sure. I don't have a problem. We generate business to business. Same as last year? Same for...
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. I apologize in advance for having to present this at the last minute. We did all our, our paperwork, course, social affairs, permit, and all the proper thing, but unfortunately, in the last month, with the Oyster Fest and playing the zombie walk, this matter got overlooked. The event is scheduled to be exactly the same as last year. It's scheduled to be in the exact same footprints as last year, which I believe Tom just provided to you.
It's on the second page.
On the second page. The event welcomes roughly a hundred classic cars to Asbury Park and their owners, and last year, we had an attendance of three hundred to five hundred people. Event lasts for consumers from one in the afternoon until five, and prior to that, there are cars registering between ten and one o'clock that also frequent our business community in the downtown. We have scheduled this in the past at the request of multiple merchants in the city of Asbury Park. It happens to be a beloved event, and is an incredibly expensive event for us.
I'll speak out. I have a policy, and I've stated it several times before, I will not hold on to anything mispresented at the last meeting, at the last minute. Understand, apologies.
It's a great event, from businesses in, out of time, and things are winding down, and people are coming. I've attended it before, it's a good event, I have no problem with it. I have no problem with it.
As busy as you were with Oyster Fest, which was one great event, I can understand why it just slipped through, so we'll give, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, and I have no problem with it, as long as you're paying all optical fees and just one street closing, no problem.
I have one small request with regard to the fees, and it's the parking fees. The, this footprint outlines a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces, because we do in fact take to the, the avenue, six hundred block of Lake, and then what is classified as Presqu'Plaza, which is Emery, out of service for roughly the better part of the day. I understand that the, the ordinance that's in effect presently would be a rate fee of ten dollars per space, which would put our budget completely out of grasp by the Chamber of Commerce. When we planned this event in the past, there was a transition between paid parking and non-paid parking in that area, and so, we were held to the street closing fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per street, and they would ask that you might review that and perhaps grant us the ability to, for this year's event, take advantage of a two hundred and fifty dollar street closing fee for the two streets that will be closed, so that we can stay within our budget for this year, and of course, make a proper plan for next year.
Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty?
Correct.
Is that what you did last year?
Yes.
So, it's five hundred total?
And since Saturday?
Correct.
Tom? More information for the committee? I mean, if she's correct, the twelve dollar fee, whether it's imposed last year, that would be the real...
That wasn't being imposed last year.
Of what?
Two hundred, two hundred and eighty, the street closing.
Right, so, so, okay, but not the parking, right. And what are your hours?
The registration begins at ten, and it is finished, and everyone is gone by five.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I appreciate your consideration.
Just for the Saturday. I mean, how do you cancel something?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. The next item on the agenda, or actually, is three items presented by our city engineer, Joe Cunha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item on my agenda is the award of contract for liquid sodium hypochlorite for the wastewater treatment plant. If you recall, we authorized the acquisition bids for this chemical, for the sewer plant, which is the chief chemical used in the treatment process at our plant. We're receiving two valid bids, and a third bid, which came in after hours, after the request of time, P M L, that bid was disqualified, was not even open, as is commonplace, more receivable bid like that. Notwithstanding, the lowest and second lowest bids were both very competitive. We had a two-year option written into the contract, at which point the city would be able to choose which contract they would like to award. My recommendation is that we award both, specifically because year one is significantly lower than what we pay now, and year two is actually lower than year one. So, I say we maximize the savings here. I've been for two years with Miracle, they're out of Farmingdale, they're the closest district here, which is likely why they were able to compete so well. So, I ask for your approval on that at the time. Second item on my agenda was intended as a simple authorization, or request for authorization, to bid a new solid waste holding contract, as our current one is set to expire December thirty-first of this year. Very recently, as recent as Monday afternoon, I received in writing from our current vendor, Felissa, who by the way is doing excellent job in my opinion, in the eighteen months that I've been here, exercising or offering the council and the city the choice to extend their contract, which is written into their current contract, an extension of two more years, years four and five. The terms that they have laid out is that they would hold their year three cost for those two years, so there would be no increase from this year's fees. Did a little bit of research, just to validate that and put it into perspective. The N G D O T Fuel Price Index, at the time that this contract was originally out to bid in December of two thousand and ten, was three dollars and fifteen cents a gallon. Currently, this month, it's three dollars and ninety-one cents a gallon. So, being one of the, the leading drivers of price with this type of contract, other than labor and wear and tear, this has significantly gone up. So, just from that perspective, this is an excellent deal that we're being offered. And as we all know, labor rarely goes down, it usually goes up, so, as those plastic vehicles and wear and tear. So, I just wanted to lay that out there as an option. It's my recommendation that we go ahead and bid the contract anyway. There is no obligation to award to the lowest bidder if we were to bid this contract, and at that time, we make the decision whether we go with the new lowest bid, if it's lower than what Felissa is offering, or we go with Felissa's offer for the two-year extension. I think that would be the best bet. It, it harms us in no way, unless Fred has a specific disagreement with that. It harms us in no way to go ahead and bid that and exercise our right to extend the other contract, when we just reject all bids received.
Well, one of the bases that you can reject the bid is if the governing body decides not to afford the project. In this case, we would be, but we'd be going in a different direction. We have to make certain that the, the right to reject all bids at the discretion of the city for any reason whatsoever was made part of the, the bid that was advertised. And what I prefer to do on this, are you under a timeframe? I know you said December thirty-one, what's the time involved?
It'd be a mandatory by statute sixty-day bid period with solid waste contracts. It's different than any other contract, and it's strictly governed by the Solid Waste Department, the D U B. So, we have sixty days. Technically, I was looking to award by the latest, the second meeting of December, so take bid sometime shortly after Thanksgiving, right, right around that.
The answer is, the answer is very tight.
So, so, in light, in light of this conversation, and I apologize, this was very recent information. It'd be my recommendation to go ahead and extend the contract for the two years at the rate that we pay now, based on the fuel price index having skyrocketed, the trend from last month to this month has actually helped from there, versus going ahead and awarding or authorizing the bid to go out for a new bidder, a new vendor.
Well, this could be held, I know it's a tight timeframe, but our next council meeting, I believe, is October second.
It is.
If we can hold it for two weeks until October second, I think we still may be able to make the timeframe. I know it's tight, but I prefer to look into this a little further before we go ahead and authorize going out to competitive bid, because there are specific enumerated reasons that you can reject, but I just wanna make sure that we're not undertaking, you know, expense and time and effort if we're gonna have a problem down the road.
Let me just jump in. I, I agree with Fred. First of all, it's first I'm hearing about this, so I think we need to collectively take a look at this and evaluate, and then bring that recommendation back to the governing body at the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll table it at the next meeting.
Yeah, what's the risk? I mean, if they're giving us a good deal, and all, and, and we go with that contract, and now you're saying, well, let's bid to see if we get something lower, we may lose that contract and they might get upset.
What you just said is, is correct, based on what Fred's analysis is, so...
Yeah, so, we may wanna look real closely at the deal that we're being offered.
And most recently, we did work out with Felissa, they are actually helping us with trash enforcement. They're placing stickers on bags that are, that contain heavy volumes of recyclables, and they're essentially what an A R we have, which is above and beyond their contract.
Are they reporting that, though?
They are. They are, at the end of each day.
There's, there's no question, I can tell you this, from the ten years I've been here, I, when I came in, we had, we had waste management, and John, you were, you were in the thick of all of that with me back then, and it was a nightmare. Felissa's done, I see you in the audience, Debbie, so what did you say to your family? Felissa's done an amazing job, so this is not a question about whether Felissa has done a good job or not a good job, this is really about us taking a look at this from a business decision and coming back with some time to look at the variables and make a, a sound recommendation to the governing body. I think that's where we're going to be.
I, I totally agree with you on Carrie's October second, but in his past contract, did he have a clause where he was up to for a year or two? Or we don't know that.
In his previous before this one?
This one.
This one includes it, the previous one did not, and that's specifically why we added it to here, because we were happy with his first three years, and now his second three years are ending.
Do you wanna wait and look at it?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't looked at any of this, Joe, so, you know, it's a little surprise.
We'll look at the terms and conditions of the current contract with Felissa, and then we'll engage in some discussions, my office and staff, and we'll make recommendations here for the next round.
That's great, and they have done an excellent job.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, that's, that's fairly not an issue here.
Never gotten a complaint.
The final item on my agenda is a tentative scope. New Jersey Department of Transportation applications are due this week, and I presented a senior bid package, a tentative scope for two separate applications to apply for. The first would be Fourth Avenue, with the limits of Bridge Avenue to Bridge Avenue. I believe we're all familiar with the conditions of pavement in that area. There are a couple other reasons why we selected this, this area. It's a tentative detour route for the bridge construction on Sunset Avenue, so if we're able to get this in ahead of that project, this would benefit the proposed traffic on that road. And also, in the rating system, Sunset Avenue was also a close second, but Fourth Avenue doesn't really require in that area much sanitary sewer, in other words, the sewer seems to be in pretty good condition in that area, whereas on Sunset, closest to the border, either or not, which leads me into the second application, which includes a traffic signal. The signal that we're recommending is at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Comstock Street, on the northwest side of, actually, on the southwest side of the high school, Asbury Park High School. We experience much pedestrian volume at that intersection, and most recently, that intersection has really been, began to falter. It's approximately forty-five years old, the controller and the equipment there, so this would be a great time and method to fund the upgrade at that intersection. It would include new handicap ramps per ADA guidelines, again, new traffic signal equipment, new sidewalks, new curving, and new pavement. And we would ideally try to put this together with a row program for next year. So, we will submit, with your approval, these two applications, and attempt to gain funding on both, or at least one, if needed.
Joe, you mentioned here that we're experiencing outages at the traffic lights. Why, why is that? Why are we, it's various locations throughout the city?
What happens is, hopefully, understanding that it's the same intersections that you're speaking of as the ones that I'm thinking of, they are mechanically operated, they have no digital synchronization whatsoever. As time goes on, they lose split seconds, they start desyncing, I'm gonna invent a word here, they, they unsync, unsynchronize from the other intersections, and what they do is they actually start skipping contacts, things as simple as spider webs, dead insects get between the contactors, which actually just snap together, did this mechanical process. The digital ones, even though they didn't fare as well during Sandy because of the sand and water damage, they, they are much more reliable when it comes to that type of operation.
This morning, on the way to work, on the way from my coffee, the sunset from Comstock, all three lights were lit.
This, this is the type of, this is very dangerous. If, if you could picture a rain in, in both directions, that's the absolute worst situation you could have now.
I mean, it was at six-thirty in the morning, but, and there was a traffic light, and I, I never caught cars there, so I can call you, so you can call.
Until it's fixed, we better put them on a blinker, the other one way, and the other, because, I mean, I've been there, it's been raining green at the same time, and part of the problem, they're old, and you can't find pieces for them. It's like having a pinball machine from the fifties, you just can't find pieces, and these lights are back to the fifties, and a lot of them are down, and that's why they were removed, and you can't even find, you can't even scavenge the pieces, like, but mainstream's finding nothing, you have to do seven new traffic lights, but they won't even help us, because they're like twenty years older than what we have.
That's correct.
It's just, you can't, it's like analog digital, I don't know what that is, but what we have is pinball machines.
Your words are doing pretty good up on the boardwalk, I'll take you there.
Yeah, so, they're just very, I have a question on the Fourth Avenue. I live on Fourth Avenue, I've probably been saving for five years. This road was paved ten years ago, so maybe it's fifteen years, Terry, I know you were here, but I mean, it was a terrible job, that was way before you. And from day one, and it wasn't like it was paved in December, where, you know, best time to paint is in summer months, because the air is better, but it, it's been terrible from day one. And I know, obviously, there's no guarantee, no warranty, but what do you usually get on a street warranty? What, what, what's the life frame of the street, like Fourth Avenue? What should it be? It should be more than that street is, and again, that's a base.
Right, depends on the base. If you have a concrete road, you get a much minimized, life expectancy somewhere eight to twelve. If you have a good base, where it's not concrete, well-compacted, fully reconstructed, you could get anywhere from fifteen to twenty years of that type of road. Now, this one, I, I don't know. Now, this one, I don't know what the situation was on there.
You can check and see what it's done. And it says reconstruction of all corner handicap ramps to be ADA required, so that was already done, to the best of my knowledge. No, they didn't put the little bumps there, or the color pink?
The guidelines have changed and they've become much stricter.
Okay.
Which includes the dimpled.
Okay, but they're all, they're all beveled down, like there's no like curves, but they have to be upgraded even more.
Well, obviously, we could analyze, if anything passes the ADA, we wouldn't tear it up just for the sake of tearing it off.
Right, and that's what you're saying, if anybody you say you've spent elsewhere.
Exactly.
And part of this reason to doing Fourth is because Sunset's going to be closed in a year or so with the bridge, where Fourth is going to be a main artery in and out, and it's going to get a lot of wear and tear.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Fall 2014.
So you'll need the council to take action to vote on these two, submitting applications for these two projects for me to solid grant funding during the regular session, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct. The actual resolution for the DOT can also be voted on, that's correct.
Thank you, Joe. Next item on the agenda matters to be introduced by city council.
I got a couple. Well, it doesn't matter, I don't.
Yes, well, obviously, everyone heard the September 25th meeting, Main Street has been canceled by mistake, so I'll show up next Monday. At the last council meeting, Jared Scramlo brought up an idea, which was like any multiple dwelling should have maybe a light that goes off by motion. Now, a couple days later, I thought about it, I thought it was a good idea. I sent everybody an email saying, what do you think? Now, the mayor responded, thinking it was already over the polls. Fred responded, like, do you want me to look into this? I said, no, don't look into it, don't spend money until other people are agreement. So I was just like, putting it out there, it's like, what does everybody think about that? As far as administration and council people.
Requiring multi-dwelling homes to have a sensor lighting. That's what you're, that's the question.
Well, it kind of makes sense.
Okay. As I said before, I think it's on the books, but already, I'll check with code, maybe not, but I'll check with code. But in addition to that, I think it's a safety feature.
Well, that's why I liked it. I thought it was a good issue too, Terry, I mean, I don't know.
We can certainly follow up on it.
Look into it, that's all we're asking to do.
Council must look into establishing such.
You gotta, you're talking emails, I've heard before. On the bills and claims.
So, before we move on, just to make sure that we're not, your next council meeting saying, what did you do about that? Are we getting direction from the governing body to look into bringing back at least a retort on?
Whether or not we have any, I don't know.
And if we don't?
And whether administration takes this a good idea or not.
Okay.
Whether we can force people to put lights on their porch or not at their expense.
Right, but I'm hearing it's multi-dwelling, so multi-dwelling in your mind is?
Jerry, I said, I think said four years or more, I'll leave that up to code, I mean, and to you and the administration, but again, it was something that kind of makes sense.
The multi-dwelling, I would think would be more than one.
Well, let the professionals figure it out. So when people come with good ideas, that kind of means.
And put, see if there's something in there about people having their house numbers shot.
Well, that's already in, I know that's a dimension. Jerry's been bringing up this idea.
Oh, I agree with him. For fire, the fire company is saying, Felissa, we do need those.
I have one more thing. On the bills and claims tonight, there's a bill for close to eight thousand dollars for Jay Ford and Son, who's a very good contractor that does traffic lights. He replaced the mechanism at Asbury and Prosper, and it needed to be replaced because, again, just trying to put the old one together, it just couldn't be done, and we had stop signs out there for months and months and months. But the only thing, this goes back to what happens to city employees, that's a county highway, and I think we're the only town in Monmouth County that pays for the traffic lights on a county highway, and we have quite a few, Comstock, Langford, Asbury is paid for by the county, we maintain it, but Springwood, all of them, and just like, I think we should put some, a letter to the county saying, guess what, guys, these are your lights, why are we maintaining them? And Terry, you and I have had discussions about this many times, and we researched it, there's no documentation either on the city's hand or the county's hand, who's to maintain them, but it's a county highway, and the county maintains every other light in Monmouth County except the Asbury app, and I just think we're getting, like, ripped off somehow. And I think somehow we should pursue that.
Sure.
Okay. If we can do that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. The Environment and Shade Tree Commission with the New Jersey Tree Foundation, IKEA and Bank of America are doing a tree canopy under WIT on Saturday, September 28th, and Kahlua Cafe is going to do a continental breakfast, so it should be a really nice event. Two other quick things. So I got a number of emails about people standing in line to buy alcohol really early in the morning, so I went by the location that was sent to me, and part of the people who were complaining about it were walking their kids to or from school. So I went by twice, there was clearly a line of people waiting to buy alcohol at seven or eight in the morning, and so I just think we should engage in a discussion about possibly leaving the liquor stores to sell alcohol at a later time, say nine, so kids who are walking to school aren't seeing ten, twenty, well, I think I saw about twelve, twelve people one day and maybe ten the other day, standing in line to buy alcohol. So we looked into an ordinance, our time for Asbury Park is seven, and I would just open the discussion up to making it nine.
Seven on weekdays and Saturdays. Sunday, it's later.
So it's a discussion, I'm not saying that we have to decide tonight, but I don't love the idea of children passing twelve people waiting in line at a liquor store at seven in the morning.
I'll clarify that on Sunday, the restriction is twelve noon, unless you're a food serving establishment that offers brunch for instance, and it's ten a.m. in those services.
Okay. Well, Fred, what do you send out to us? Was that a state ordinance or a local ordinance?
I think it was Asbury's ordinance.
Yes, it was our current ordinance, correct. And then we did gather some ordinances from some other towns. A number of other towns likewise also allow sales of alcohol coverages on weekdays and Saturdays starting at 7:00 a.m. There are some others that start at nine. So we can certainly continue our review and look to see if there's any state guidelines or requirements on it, but I know it was something Councilman Quinn wanted to bring forward, see if council was interested in having us review it.
Yeah, so maybe we can just go offline and have a conversation about it. I don't see, I don't think nine is unreasonable for a liquor store to sell alcohol. My other one was people, a couple people, it's hurricane season, winter's coming, and I just got a couple of questions about the Office of Emergency Management, and just speaking for myself being new, I would love to, and I don't know how you do this, but can, you know, kind of get involved in the, I know we're going to have, you know, I know Mark's retiring, and there's going to be some key people in the Office of Emergency Management that are transitioning. So I just wondered if we could possibly do any sort of convening of that meeting and just getting up to date on how the city responds to disasters, or, you know, what happened with Sandy and everything else, and I would love to be a part of that.
And I think I know you have.
Yes.
If I can just add something to that, and it may be of help, and I'm in favor of what your idea is, but about three weeks ago, I met with about eight officials in the city to try to get the heads up on what was done last year, just because of us being new. But in addition to that, some of the ideas they may have had as to what we could do this year to improve upon what was done last year. So I'd be more than willing to share that with you, but I'm not at all opposed to having something else.
What I would suggest is that I think it would be good enough for the community as well as for the governing body is to have a, looking at our fire chief, Kevin Kettie, who is the EOM coordinator, and have the chief come in, we'll put it on a work session agenda, make a presentation to the governing body and the community, and that way we can take it from there. I think that would be a very healthy exercise, and I think it's timely.
Do you think, Kevin, could you do that for our next meeting? Would that be possible? Only again because you're standing, you're going to talk to our lady. Great.
I would suggest to that, the meeting that we had a few weeks ago, that we have not only the chief, but some of the other individuals that were instrumental last year, so the public will know, wouldn't really transpire. I don't see it being a five-minute meeting, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes if time allows.
Okay.
We'll throw on the work session.
Thank you. Just, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Just really, one thing I have, I'm on the DLA commission, and every commissioner from all the different towns have an alternate in case you cannot make it to the meeting. Well, I never miss a meeting, so I never had a need for an alternate. You see, my first meeting is Thursday, and I was very politely reminded by the commission that I still did not have an alternate, I named alternate. So I'm putting it out there to the public at this point. I would love to get anyone that's interested in being an alternate on the DLA commission. I would like you to download the application, send a resume in to the city clerk's office by September 30th, so that on the October 2nd meeting, we can, as a council, look at those and name a person for an alternate. Whoever it is, just know you will barely go to a meeting because I never miss. But I don't, I don't miss meetings. But I'm just putting that out there, that's it. I used to have a few things. First of all, many of you have already heard about the Affordable Care Act, and here in council chambers, on Friday, September 27th at 10:00 a.m., the Health and Human Services Director out of Region Two will be here to explain it. As I said, it starts at 10 o'clock, all are welcome. In addition to that, there have been some recent developments. At the last council meeting, we did discuss that there would be a discussion since the chief was leaving as to whether the governing body wanted to talk about having another chief of police or a director of police, or slash public safety director. So I want to throw that out, so at least it can be brought up and discussed at the next council meeting. I think we have a lot of items on it, the agenda, next council meeting. But then in addition to that, how many of you went to the Oyster Fest? Did you have a good time?
Sue, one, if I could just offer a suggestion, you're asking for any applications to be in by the 30th September, your meeting is, that's a Monday, and your meeting is Wednesday, so maybe Friday, the 27th, give you a chance to, you know, share that with your council members and put it out in the packets. So applications for the DLA commission opening that you'll ever go to are due the 27th of Next item on the agenda matters for the city attorney?
Yes, two things. I'd just like to let the public know that the council is not going to be taking action tonight on any of the matters that were discussed during our executive session. And also, if I could just clarify one thing that Councilman Moore said earlier, and that has to do with the special meeting that had been planned for next Wednesday, September 25th, concerning the Main Street, what's known as the road die program. That is in fact being canceled. However, just so you know, the council is going to be moving forward to have a special meeting that evening scheduled at 4:00 p.m. The intention of that meeting is to go into executive session so the council can undertake interviews of the candidates for the city manager position. There will be an open public portion at the very beginning of the meeting for people to come to the microphone, write any comments that they may have. However, after that, the intention is for the council to go into executive session and to conduct interviews of candidates. There will be no action taken when the council reconvenes in public session after the interviews take place, I'll merely confirm, but I did want to let you know that we'll be going missing to the newspapers to that effect.
Okay. Can I have a report? Okay, yes. Close. Second. Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Moore.